Hello, good evening, can you hear me? Alright, well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Ward Three Town Hall hosted by Councilmember Tracy Arnold. We have our City Manager, Ms. Lyndale Miller. We have Mr. Hicks, Information Technology. Our lawyer, Mr. Denmark. And all of the department heads that's going to be making a presentation. Thank you for coming out and we're going to start this presentation right now with a prayer. And I believe we, um... Major? So we're going to start it off with the major.
Please let us bow our heads, please. Father, just thank you for allowing us to come out right now, Father, to this town hall. We actually just clear our minds and our hearts right now, Father, to receive the information that's going to be given us tonight. That would change your heart and change the city right now, Father. Blessing your son, Jesus' name, amen.
Councilmember, please come up.
Thank you, we're going to go ahead and get started. And I would like for us to go ahead and move to the first slide, please. Well, that might not be it. Alright, so on this slide, you see, we have a picture. Of course, there's an agenda here, right? That's going to talk, that has a list of the things that we're going to talk about today. But, the picture is important to me. And I presented this in one of our newsletters. This picture is a list of items that the council members, the other council members and I worked on earlier this year in our retreat. And this information was from the survey, the community survey, that I sent out earlier this year. It highlights the things that the community is passionate about. And so, it's also a friendly reminder of where we're going as a ward, as a community. And it keeps us grounded, if you will. And like I said, it's just a friendly reminder. So I thought that it was very important to put it in the slides today because that's what we're going to be talking about. We're going to be talking about those things that are important to you. Those things that you have asked for us to do with your tax dollars. And so, we're just coming out of the budget season, and we're going to talk about the initiatives that we're going to move forward with based on the requests from the community. Next slide, please. Oh, well, we didn't need that one. I am Councilwoman Tracy Arnold. Representative, elected representative for City of College Park Ward Three, where it is one city, two counties, and endless possibilities. Alright, next slide, please. Blue Sky. Who has heard about Blue Sky? Yeah, it's that, that big empty space that's on the corner of Godby Road and Old National Parkway. And so, we had a huge groundbreaking there a couple of weeks ago. And so, we have, what, it's 180 affordable new units that are coming to that complex. And it's to my understanding that we haven't had any development in this area for a couple of years. The most recent one is Summersby. If you didn't know, Summersby also is in Ward Three. It's at the corner of West Fayetteville Road and Godby. And it too is affordable housing. But it is now full. So we're looking forward to having something new for our constituents. It is expected to open next summer. And we're looking forward to not only this development, but other developments to come. Next slide. Temple Square. Does anybody know where Temple Square is? Okay, it's on the other side of the ward, on Virginia Avenue, right off of Virginia Avenue, near Woodward Academy. And so, this is the second phase of Temple Square, which just completed two weeks ago, three weeks ago. And so, now, these townhomes are also, they're rent to own, but we're offering another option of housing in our community. So, we're looking to also build the housing stock. So with the new affordable apartments that are coming, and with these new townhomes, we are leading the way in the City of College Park when it comes to housing development. And I am extremely proud and excited about the products that we are providing to our constituents. Next slide. Computer Lab. I'm proud of this. I know that when Mr. Hicks comes up, he's going to talk a little bit more about this. He's proud of it as well. Years ago, we used to have a computer lab here at the Tracy Wyatt Recreation Center. That computer lab ended up closing for whatever reason or another. I think that the funding was no longer available, but we are now bringing that computer lab back. And so, I've shared before with some of our constituents in the past that between downtown College Park and on the south side, there is not a library. And we have students, we have families that need to have access to library services or computer services, they need to be able to apply for jobs, look things up on the internet. And everyone cannot afford either internet in their home or to have their own computer. And so, this computer lab will serve as a resource in the community. It is completely free. We started out thinking that we were going to have 10 stations in the computer lab, but it looks like we're now going to offer 20 computer stations in the computer lab. It is completed with the exception of some painting that needs to take place on the wall, which is a beautification project and a branding, if you will, for Ward Three. And then, we will be having a ribbon cutting in a couple of weeks, I think, before the end of the month? I'm still working on it, okay. But we will be sending out an announcement in reference to that ribbon cutting, and I'm excited about this as well. That's right, next slide. And also, in the Tracy Wyatt Recreation Center, we have a STEM program that is coming. The, it is going to teach individuals, not just youth, but anyone who is interested in knowing how 3D printing works. So if you all don't know about me, I am a tech geek, right? Like, I like all the gadgets and things of that nature. But 3D printing is actually an amazing tool to be able to bring your ideas to life. And they're offering or having a 3D printer on this side of town and giving people the opportunity to learn how to use it and create items, especially small businesses who may be in, in thinking about offering a certain product. They can come up with a prototype and use a 3D printer to create, to show what that particular item is that they want to market. So I'm very excited about the opportunity to work with, the organization is called Wonderland. And they're going to start offering summer, I think, the latter part of the summer programs to teach young people. And then, we will start to introduce and have shorter programs for adults and for our senior citizens. The Drone Soccer Certificate. So you all probably heard me talk about Drone Soccer last year. And when people hear Drone Soccer, it's like, what is that, and, you know, what is it about? So it's a couple of things with the Drone Soccer Program. We purchased the equipment last year. And now, the Recreation Department is looking to offer the actual program, the training. So there's two pieces to Drone Soccer. One, to be able to introduce young people to learning how to manipulate, how to build, and how to control drones. And, and I want to make sure that I explain this because when people hear drones, they're like, wait a minute, we're in an area where we shouldn't be flying drones. These will not be GPS drones. They are manual drones. So they'll learn how to operate these devices within a facility. Not only that, but they will also do competitions. Come on in, come on, sit down, make yourself comfortable. They will also participate in competitions. There will be teams of individuals that will compete for, you know, they have competitions throughout the state and in other states. And that's for young people. But the, the important feature of the program is that it allows individuals to train, to gather the hours that they need so that they can become FAA certified. At the end of the day, you know, the, the goal is to make sure that we provide people with opportunities where they can change their lives, right? So, a lot of times, we introduce our children to things like, let's say martial arts, painting, photography. Well, this is just another one of those types of electives that they can build on and build a career out of. Again, it's something that's also going to be offered to, exposed to adults and seniors as you're interested, but we are going to start with the youth. And so, I'm very excited about this program and about offering a certificate, the ability for young people to have something to look forward to when they graduate from high school, where they may start their career. Next slide. The Nonprofit Seminar. Earlier last month, we held a nonprofit seminar, which was very pivotal for organizations that, that are looking to start a nonprofit or already have a nonprofit. It was very informative about reporting, about grants. And we are looking forward to offering another phase here in the next few months. It's to my understanding that the businesses on the Old National Godby Corridor have not received as much attention to help them to promote and build their businesses. And we started with nonprofits. We're going to build on another nonprofit seminar. And later, later on in the year, we will have one for businesses. Oh, I'm sorry, and I'm receiving clarification that also will include youth businesses. EV Charging. So, I don't know whether or not if everyone received the newsletter. If you did not receive the newsletter, last, last month, I advocated for us to receive an EV charging station in Zup Park. And that's really important for the constituents that live on that side of town because we have several individuals that have EVs. So, we're looking to see if we can also offer EV charging stations in our, I think some of our other parks offer them as well. But I think that you all have heard that we're looking to bring a park here on Godby Road. And we will be offering an EV charging station there as well. I did learn at one point in time that the EV charging stations were free, but those funds that the administration was providing for EV charging are no longer available. So it is a small fee, but I hope that if you have an EV vehicle, if, electric vehicle, that you would take advantage of the charging station there in Zup Park. And speaking of Zup Park, we also have another feature that's coming soon, which will be about some branding, a beautification project that should be finished hopefully within the next few weeks. Okay, so before the City Manager comes up, I wanted to just take a moment to say thank you. You all have been very engaged in what you want for the community. And it is what I, what drives me to do these things for you. I ask that when you have questions, concerns, don't hesitate to reach out. We, we want to make sure that your voice and your concerns are, are heard and that we respond to them. We have a lot of different things that have been happening over the past few weeks under the, the guide of our new City Manager, and I'm really excited. You may have noticed that there have been, there's new cleaning going on in Ward Three, especially on some of the empty byter lots. We've had more engagement as far as trash being cleaned up in Ward Three. And I'm really excited about the partnership that the new City Manager is bringing to make sure that we leverage the tools that we already have in place. One in particular is See Click Fix. Some of us used to know it as I notify, and I think it might even be the same thing. I encourage you to continue to utilize that application when you see something that's going on inside of the city. Because she has used that tool and has charged each one of the department heads to utilize the information that comes through that tool to help us help you. So again, please continue to stay engaged. I always know that you can reach me by my cellphone via Shawn, via email. Although I stay busy, I'm still committed to responding to each and every one of you. And so, with that being said, I'm going to bring up our new City Manager, Ms. Lyndale Miller.
Good evening. Good evening. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so this is really not who I am. I was playing around that day, and they kind of took the picture and they said it worked. But, you know, staff knows this is not who I am, but, you know. Okay. Thanks, Shawn. So, my name is Lyndale Miller. I am the City Manager for the City of College Park. And it's a very, very passionate role for me. And I like to start by telling people that being a City Manager for me is not a career. I truly look at it as a role, a service. And so, a little bit about me, and I won't say too much about me. But I think it's good that you know who's sitting in that office and the harder the person is sitting in the office. So I'm originally from the Bahamas, I was born in Nassau, Bahamas. I, my mother is one of 16 children, so I come from a huge family. And I grew up in an island called Long Island. So Nassau is the city, most people know Nassau. Long Island is basically just that one road. So we would say, you're going up the street or you're going down the street. And my grandparents, they owned 50 acres. We were the grocery store for the island. We sold pork, bacon, milk, eggs, steaks, because we had the animals. And for that reason, today, I don't eat most of them. But I bring that up because although my parents lived in Nassau, my father, I like to say, he's self-made, he worked from 16 until he became the CEO of the same company. And he has really been a mentor for me. He is my hero. My grandmother was the one that taught me everything about work, work ethics, and people, and being fair to people, and treating people kind. And I learned that from waking up with the sunrise and going to bed with the sunset. And if you know anything about farming, you know what that meant. You woke up at four o'clock in the morning, and you went to bed early, or it's on you. But you're going to wake up at four o'clock in the morning. If you needed hot water, we put the hot water in the sun. If you wanted to cook, there was a stove outside. We did this thing called straw work that we sold to the US. And I say all this to say that my family had 50 acres, but we wouldn't have known it because we had to work for everything that we wanted. At some point, my father sent me to college in Florida, and that's the only thing he paid for was school. I then started a business at 18 because all I knew was to work. And in doing that, I then, I married an attorney, a beautiful man I like to call the love of my life. And I then began working for government. When I started working for government, I took jobs that no one else wanted. I started at the very, very bottom. So I know what it meant to work your way up. I know what it meant to be with leaders that were not compassionate. And I know what it meant to be with leaders that truly cared. And in 20-plus years of government, I only had one mentor, leader that, until now, that cared. And that stayed with me. And I say this to say that as a City Manager, I remember that. I remember that when I manage my staff, because I, I remember that they're people. They're people that have families, they have concerns outside of the city. But they're people that come to work every day. And then, I remember when I sit in the office that there are residents out there that has needs. They want the grass to be cut, they want clean water, they want safety. And if you have a business, they want the business to thrive. So I thought it was important to tell you that because when I say that this is not a career for me, it's not. It's a service. I just happen to get paid. So, when I'm running around City Hall and they can tell you, I'm laughing all day. And they're looking at me like, what's wrong with you? You know? And it's because when I can solve a problem and I go back into the office, it makes me feel good. I come in on a Sunday, not because, you know, they make me do it, because I want things to be done come Monday when we have an agenda meeting. Because it's important, what we do in coun, in council affects you. And I believe in it. Everyone knows on Fridays, and I fight for it. They try to fill up my calendar and I take it off. On Fridays, I'm in the streets. I truly am, and I'll probably be in this area on Friday. But I do that because I can't understand what you need if I'm sitting in the office. It's secondhand if it comes to me that way. But when I'm walking around, I see it. But Councilwoman Arnold mentioned See Click Fix, and I know that it's been underused for a while. But I plead with you to use it. If you see it, register it. It's one way that I can track that something's getting done, it's being addressed, who's fixed it, hasn't been done, they reported this three weeks ago. You know, right now, when I walk around, I'm told this is wrong, this is wrong, and so I write it down. But if, if you see something and See Click Fix, and you just click on it and say, you know, the grass needs to be cut at this location. There's a puddle of water that's been standing for three weeks at this location. I went to the library and the rail was broken. You know, things of that nature, it helps. I'm not going to act like I don't know where we are. I think we all know where we are, and it's a transition, but we'll get there. And I wanted you to know that although I can't be in 100 places at once, you have See Click Fix, you can email my office, I'm out on Fridays. And most of all, if there's something that your, your community truly, truly needs, you know, send it to your Councilwoman, and then send it to our office, and we're here to service. But, and everyone knows me, I always close that with a scripture. And for me, it was, as I thought about today, I thought about Jeremiah 29 and 11 that says, "For I know the plans that I have for you, the plans to prosper you, and not to harm you, the plans to give you hope and a future." And I just truly believe that if we're honest, we know where we are, but with your help, I can help you. And I am here to service your community. And I truly believe that.
Okay. Thank you, we appreciate that. Alright, next up, we have, okay, so I don't know whether or not we had any order to this. We're going to start with Mr. Hicks, or, okay, we'll start with Mr. Hicks, who's going to give us some IT updates.
Well, good evening, everyone. I am Michael Hicks, as our Councilwoman stated. I am your Chief Information Officer. And my role is to make sure that we deploy technology, A, that you could use, B, that's innovative, and also, three, that's at your fingertips. And all of my technology agenda that you're going to see here really lines up with our five strategic goals. They are low economy and growth, quality of life, transportation and mobility, public safety and security, and governance of customer service. Everything that we do at the city is supposed to line up with those goals. And as we go through the slides, your light bulbs should come on that says, okay, this is security cameras, this lines up with quality of life, it also lines up with public safety and security. So I'll talk about those goals as I go through my presentation. Next slide. So one of the things I wanted to talk about on the agenda is our security cameras. We have installed security cameras all around the premise of our Tracy Wyatt Recreation Center. We got brand-new cameras, internal and external, inside of the gyms, inside of the lobby, and also the community room. We've also put cameras around the community room. We've got new cameras all up and down Godby Road. We can view those cameras, we are monitoring those cameras. And the next thing I want to talk about is Wi-Fi. We have upgraded Wi-Fi around the city in all of our city-owned buildings. We have new Wi-Fi in this building. So we want our residents, we want our staff to be able to take their mobile devices and register on their devices when you walk inside the Recreation Center. The days of waiting in line for registration is over. You should be able to take your device, get onto our Wi-Fi, log onto the website, and register your kid for any recreation. New cameras at Zup Park, we also put new cameras at Zup Park. Again, I mentioned, we got new cameras all around the city, we put new cameras at Zup Park, so we can monitor what goes on at our parks. One of our strategic goals I, I mentioned is public safety and security. We want to make sure that those cameras line up with public safety and security. The new computer lab, as Councilwoman Arnold alluded to, we're excited about that. And one of the reasons why we're not quite ready to open it yet, because we added 10 more computers to that lab. So we're now going to have a total of 20 computers. So Shawn and I, the contractors, and some other people on my team, we're getting that lab ready to open. And I can't wait for the ribbon cutting because we, we've got computers in there. And again, the people on Godby Road have the right now to come and fill out an application, okay? Find out what's going on in the city, we can do that. Imagine, you've got a police precinct, you've got a fire station, and now you've got a computer lab on Godby Road. So we're excited about it. Next slide. So some of the future innovations. Councilwoman Arnold, I want to, I want to steal one of your phrases, you said, imagine a possibility. You said, imagine a possibility. Hold that because I've got that in my slides. One of the future innovations I want is, a lot of you all don't know that College Park is a smart city. I've got smart cameras on Main Street that count pedestrian, cars, cyclists, and buses. We have those on Main Street. We've had them almost five years now. So we want to do this on the corner of Gabby Road and Old National. Okay? Right across from the McDonald's. We want to count that traffic. We want to count how many pedestrians are crossing the street? How many cars are coming down Old National and Gabby? How many buses? Okay? So that we could take that information, give it to our public safety team and says, you know what? There were 60,000 cars that came down Gabby Road. So what does that do? It turns on the light bulb. Let us put a police car or let us put some kind of service out there to A, make sure people are slowing down. So when we slow people down, that also decreases pedestrian incidents. The AI technology for future innovations. So Councilwoman Arnold is smiling because she's been on my case for several months about putting AI on the agenda. And see, the manager, we're gonna get there. But that's a process that we've got to go through first. And right now, I'm talking to two companies. I want to talk to the third company. Then we're gonna follow our purchasing protocol by putting it out for an RFP and bringing the right company. But I want to talk about what we can do with AI in terms of our future technology. Okay? We can use AI now for registrations. Gabby Road, Tracy Y Recreation Center, we have basketball. We've got other sports activities that our kids can sign up for. We could use AI language to cut short on the applications. Okay? So that's what we're testing in test environment. We're using customer service first and also my office to test AI. Okay? We're about to put that in the test environment. And I want to use it for future sports registration that we're gonna use AI for. Next slide. Some of the other future innovations, I would like to put kiosk all over the city. We don't have any kiosk at Tracy Y Recreation Center. I want to put those kiosks in place, okay? So that you can register your kids for sports. Okay? You can get updates about what's going on in the city. You can find out what's going on in Fortin County Schools. All right, let's go to the next slide, James. These are, these are the kind of kiosks that I'd like to have in our recreation centers. You remember a while back when we had COVID, the outbreak of COVID? Well, we put temperature sensor machines all over our city-owned buildings. Okay? I like to have these kiosks in all of our city-owned buildings that you can walk into and scan to find out what's going on in College Park. If you want to register for something, you can. You want to pay for a citation, you can. And we want to put these kiosks all over College Park. Next slide. One of the things I want to do, you can pay on this kiosk. You want to pay for food? You want to pay for your child's registration? You should be able to do that on that kiosk. You shouldn't have to walk up to the registration desk and say, I want to register my kid for basketball. You should be able to go to the website by getting on our Wi-Fi, using your device, or you should be able to walk up to the kiosk and pay. Next slide. This is new, but I talked to our fire chief. Fire chief, can we put blood pressure machines on the kiosk in all of our city-owned buildings? And the fire chief gave me a thumbs up, like, Mike, we can do that. And I want to use one of the kiosks to do just that. Put blood pressure machines in all of our city-owned buildings. We got recreation centers all over the city and I like to put these kiosks on. Next slide. For the county schools, imagine at the Tracy Y Recreation Center, we have over 300 kids registering for basketball. And sometimes mom and dad get off from work and they want to rush to that recreation center to see their kids play and they can't make it to the school. Well, I want them to scroll through that kiosk to find out what's going on in Fortin County. They can scroll through the kiosk, find their kid's school, and get an update. Next slide. Unlimited possibilities. I stole that from you, okay? But these are the kind of things that we could do. Okay? Questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Mike is correct. I have been on him about upgrading the technology and I love it. I, I don't know anybody that doesn't love being able to have technology on demand. Okay, so next we'll hear from our fire chief, Chief Jones.
Well, good evening, everyone. I am your Fire Chief Sterling Jones. Actually, I'm here with my counterparts. My deputy fire chief is with me and my EMS chief as well. For those who don't know, Chief Slaughter's been with us about a month? Month and a half. So we definitely welcome Chief Slaughter to our new team. So he's a welcome addition. He's a welcome addition. Chief Slaughter brings over 30 years of experience to our department. So he filled a major gap for us. As you go back and look at those divisions of labor for us, at that time, it was kind of me and Chief Taylor and other chief officers kind of filling that role as that deputy chief would. So I've said, now, I feel a little relief that some of those duties are disseminated. And he's wants more and more and I'm giving him more and more. So we definitely going to utilize his talents. I don't have any slides, but I just kind of took the opportunity to write down a couple of topics of discussion to kind of let you know some of the things that we're doing. So during our budget meeting, we had a conversation about a feasibility study. For those who don't know, when you start looking at those studies, it kind of takes the picture of, and actually we met, we're Georgia Tech today. The feasibility study is kind of gonna let us know exactly where we are for a city as far as our fire station locations, service rendering. It kind of gives us a picture of exactly where our alignment is and where we can improve. So we start to look at that study is more important because if you look at our current configuration from Station 1, 2, and 3, there may be some adjustments we need to kind of make to provide better coverage. That's from a fire chief standpoint and from public safety. We all look at the event and travel distance and service rendered. So if you got, something happens on one end of town, if your fire station is so far away that they can't get there in a timely manner, it's kind of difficult to render that good service. And as the city manager alluded to, us providing service is what we're here for. Public safety in general is a service provider. So if I can't turn around and, and have a picture, because my goal is to paint a picture for city council and the city manager to let them know, hey, look, we go in, our projection, the study says we need to be doing this. That kind of sets a roadmap for us. So we start to look at our future plans, five years, 10 years down the line. We can kind of see a configuration where our city is now and where we need to be. Because you can think, you see the apartments coming across the street. Look at possibly 6th West kicking in. There's a lot of complexes in housing and things we have to cover. So if you look at those same fire stations, those same personnel, all of a sudden, now you start to bring in another 500, another thousand, number 5,000 people in it. You gotta look at exactly how you gotta render that service with those same service providers you have. So we have to make those adjustments and based on that study will kind of give us an idea where we should go next. So that's gonna be really important for us because I'm not sure if we've had one in the past, but I'm looking forward to that. And based on where we are, it's gonna be really involved. It's gonna take a lot of players. But the end result is, I don't know how long it's gonna take, but I'm assuming six, eight months or so. But when it's there and it's rolling out, and I know, I know Councilman Arnold can say it's the Georgia Tech thing, so you're probably happy about that. But I'm looking at the end result. I, I'm ecstatic about exactly what they're gonna be providing for us to kind of shape that future for us. Tools and equipment. We're getting new fire trucks. We, you'll see, we have a push-in ceremony coming in really soon. We are fitting the truck right now. It's down getting the brackets and thing to hang the equipment. So I would imagine within 30 days, we're gonna have a new fire truck, new ladder truck. It's gonna be for push-in ceremony, which you ever want to get a notice. And that's important for us because when you start looking at providing top equipment for a city, reliable fire engines and ladders and first responder units is imperative. Because that's the worst thing as a provider. If I go in and hit a button and the apparatus won't start, how is that gonna look for us being a service provider? Because at that point, you render useless. Really don't have the tools and equipment to do the services you're required to do. So for us having the new equipment, reliable equipment is paramount for us to get our job done. So you're gonna see a new ladder. And under Chief Taylor's toolage, we're gonna have actually two rescue units. Those rescue units are gonna be like a big box truck. You're gonna see those, they're actually getting wrapped as we speak. And so we're gonna put two of those in service as well. And hopefully, we're gonna have three in service. That's kind of the vision going forward. Because you start to think about EMS calls, we're averaging 30 by 300 a month. Start looking at that service provider with two rescue units and the fact that Grady's overwhelmed. I mean, that should be candid and obvious. You know, you look at trying to run 8,000 calls a year with three units, Grady providing service as well, and they're providing for the south part of Fortin County. We have to take up our slack to be able to provide service for our citizens. So those first responder units are gonna be paramount, get noticed and serviced. So in my vision, I think we need to put one more in service and try to provide three. It's kind of what direction we're going. So those will be things that's tentative, but I think that's the prudent way to go. Staffing is a big thing. As you start to look at staffing, staffing is something I think we look at once, twice, three times a week. So you're looking at staffing and how to bring fire personnel. And I don't use the word fireman. Those words are kind of archaic back in my line of work. And I was kind of taught or calibrated back in the day about saying fireman because that's a gender-specific word that's not gender-specific occupation. So the word now is firefighter. So that went late to all the young ladies and they should have her aspiration to kind of do what we do. You know, Chief Slaughter, I've been coming on for, and I got about 30 plus years in my belt as well. So when you start to look at those people are gonna replace us with the next three to five years, we gotta make sure our young ladies and everybody else that wants to do what we do, they can know there's an open platform. But if I say fireman this and fireman that, that implies that this job is just for men. And it's not. It's, the job is specific for, the best firefighter I can say is a student athlete. Because there's so many requirements for us to do to actually be certified because you have to certify in fire and EMS. You have to be an advanced EMT to pass all the training requirements. So that means you gotta know all the medical terminology. You gotta know all the fire stuff. You gotta be physically able to do the job. So that's the biggest thing for us is finding that right person to fill those roles to provide that service. So that's just to get them in the door. So after a while, it's a year and a half or so for training, a year and a half from the date of hire to they put them in service if they don't come in with certification. So you can see how much you gotta find that right person because you don't have the ability to turn around and say, have a person in and they don't work out or they flunk out within six months, you're starting over again. So I've said, now you lost two years because you gotta make up for that six months. And now that new person gotta go another year and a half. So it's crucial as we go back and we make our hiring selections, that we find the right people. Right people have the intelligence, the determination. And the biggest thing about it is you gotta have the heart. You gotta understand that being a service provider is the best thing you can do because those other things are just physical attributes that you have. But those intangibles, to be willing to go in because their citizens are knocking on the door, they need assistance, they're outside of the job description. So when you gotta go render in, you gotta be able to assist those citizens. That's the biggest thing. We get what we call the term as the invalid assist. That's when we have a citizen that's, they can't get out of bed or they actually fell, fell getting up and we gotta pick them up and put them back in bed. That's the service that always didn't go calculated. So there's always not a news conference for that kind of stuff. But if you have your loved one that's sitting on the ground and you have somebody that can't pick them up and put them back, fire departments call for that. You know, and that service we got, and it could be three o'clock in the morning. And it could be so, we have those addresses that we, you know, a lot of firefighters, you say, okay, that's such and such because we go to that house all the time. So we got those frequent flyers, but you go in the first time, render the same service. You go in, if it's the 50th time, render the same service. Yes, ma'am, how can I help you? Render your service. Anything else you need from us? You get back in service, you go back to the station. That's part of it. Because without that, it means nothing. Because the worst thing you can do as a fire chief, as a chief officer, is get a bad report that we treated somebody badly. Because that's a reflection on us. You know, that bad reflection is, I have to take that on the chin even though I didn't know about it. It had nothing to do with me because the department head, it all falls on me. So we gotta make sure that we have the people going out and they represent the department and you represent the city well. You know, and it all starts from when you first walk in the door. You know, if our firefighters walk in, we try to look tight. Uniforms are tight. Because that's, that's the branding. That's the piece we gotta go up someone. A strange story, I was in the store yesterday and younger, they say, young man, I have to say you look good in your uniform today. I said, thank you, ma'am. You know, and I was, I've got to be on the nines. I go in and I step and I bring it. Because that's what we have to. Because that's, when they see that patch and they see that fire department, they understand that we are representing the city. Because not about Sterling Jones, this is about College Park, it's about the fire department, it's about the people who represent. So we gotta make sure we represent well. That's each and every day. There is no slack days, there's no days that I'm feeling bummy. There's no days I'll come in and not shaved. Every day is a day you gotta show a good impression on the people you see. Because sometimes you see them just one time. You never know who those people know. You can see somebody that say, look, I render a service. And next you know, you're getting a call from your council member. I heard you met one of my neighbors today. So you never know who knows somebody. So that professional attitude is critical for us to do a good job. And you have to understand that. So we talked about diversity, passion, future needs. Oh man, that's one thing I love about College Park is when you start to look at the vision, thinking about 6th West and the complexes going on. The biggest thing you can say about a city is the city's growth. When you start looking at the ability to grow and knowing that we have steeped in history, but there's still the blank slate. That's people that want to come in and be a part of our city. They want to come and grow with our city. They want to live here. They want to work and start businesses here. When you see that, that's the, that's the kind of reflection of a place where you want to be. So that's the thing I really love about being here. I can say over the 30 years, I've pretty much enjoyed every place I've worked. But when you come here, you get a chance, you can render good service and you go home and say, man, we did good today. You know, I'm ready for tomorrow. That's the good thing about working here. I have the confidence in my city manager, my elected officials, to go in and do what we need to do. And to have a competent team, I'm on cloud nine. I mean, I can't ask for anything better because the thing that you have to look at is when you have competent subordinates, I mean, look at the subordinates. We call each other first names when we're in office. Because my team is so strong that they can go back and figure out what we need to do and they go out and get it done. They come back and tell me, hey, look, chief, we, this section said, hey, man, do what you gotta do. Do what you gotta do. I mean, you gotta, just, only thing I need to do is facilitate. That's my job at this point now was, and that's a contrast. It's, it's different for me because I'm so used to being hands-on. Now all of a sudden, I'm just a facilitator. I'm the coach on the bench, just looking, just waiting to get off the bench. And all of a sudden, I just sit back down, you know, stand up, sit back down because my team was strong. You know, from the admin staff to the operational staff, to the community risk reduction staff. I said, I got a great team. We have going on over the fire department. I just gotta say. One thing I'm gonna talk about is emergency management. For those who haven't signed up, sign up for Falcon. It's on our city website. Falcon Everbridge is the way you get the messages out. And if you're looking at me like, I'm not sure what you're talking about, go to the city's website. Falcon is a notification system we get from AFCIMA that allows you to get emergency messages. So when there are things happening about storm events coming on, you get those messages straight from our office. So you get those, you sign up for. It has a myriad of opportunities for you to get messages from a weather standpoint, a disaster standpoint. That's what you want to know because when you start to look at our emergency management, that's gonna be a division that we're gonna blow up next year. Because when you start to look at those additional duties, EMA is something that you just have to immerse yourself into and it's all encompassing. You start thinking about every emergency and you think about now the stuff that's going on down in Texas. Think about that. EM is right there in the middle of that. So those notifications and it's part of the thing that is really that I, I'm kind of new to EMA so I got about three or four years under my belt. But when you start to look about it, think about it, the part that's amazing for me is a lot of the work done on the days you don't have an event. So 99% of the work is done on what they call the blue sky days. So that way, when you have those storm potentials and this flood potentials, you're doing the work now so when that event happens, you're prepared for it. And which is different for us from a responder standpoint, we react. You know, we have community risk reduction. We go out and do our pre-plans and inspections and whatnot. But we deal mostly when the bell rings, we go perform. EMA is a totally different beast. All of a sudden, now we prepare in case eventualities of something happen and we make those steps to mitigate. Keep the worst thing from happening is, we kind of get on the front end of it. So that's different for us is to kind of take that mindset and do the work on the front end instead of the back end. So I mean, it's just, I look and I get really so excited about the potential, where we are and where we're gonna be. And my goal is when I leave here, that we set it up for the next person. You know, Chief Elmer did a great job and kind of handed me the ball. I didn't know he was gonna retire, but when he gave it to me, I'm like, I got it. So all of a sudden, now my job and our team's job is to make sure we prepare for those next chief officers coming in behind us because when they get it, I want to say we left them a good hand. Because we're gonna leave them with a good roadmap of where we need to go.[1752.48] So we talked about strategic planning and all the rest of that stuff in another time. But I just, I kind of wanted to just kind of spit out some things we're talking about. And so our office, we're always there. If you have any questions for us, please reach out. If you see us in the street, please just stop by and let us know how we can improve, how we can do better. Because that's the purpose why we're here is do better, provide a great service for you.
Okay, next up is uh, is it, is it you? Oh, oh, okay. It's going to be Chief Connie Rogers, but um, it's, it's not chief, it's Major Denard. All right, come on in.
I'm Major Denard and uh, I'm going to have our Chief Connie Rogers. We're glad to be here to give you an update with what's going on in Ward Three. We have a lot going on. Uh, I myself had a country bringing up on the form, so I work, I'm like you. So I've been out riding bikes this morning since seven o'clock. That's why we got this dress on today, the shorts and things of that nature. Uh, I currently uh, manage the Criminal Investigation Division, jail operations, special projects. And I just undertook the Community Policing Division. So I believe in getting out the community, uh, talking to the community. Uh, because what you say matters to me, you are a mirror of us, what we should be working on. And uh, public service is definitely what we offer to you. Uh, right now, I'm going to call up Officer Gibbons, who's a part of the Community Policing Division. He's going to give you some stats and things of that nature. Uh, I'm not a big stat guy. I believe in work itself, uh, work shows. But these numbers are actually uh, are going to show the actual results of the work that we put in over the last couple of years.
All right, good evening everyone. Um, as Major Denard said, I'm Officer Gibbons, uh, here with the College Park Police Department. Again, I give everybody greetings from uh, Chief Connie Rogers and Deputy Chief Shire's McCreary. We're going to talk about these numbers real quick about crime, right? So before we start talking about crime, we're going to talk about how crime is broken down in the city of College Park. So crime in College Park is broken down in three categories, uh, three categories, right? It's crimes against persons, crimes against uh, society and crimes against property. So the crimes against persons are crimes such as sexual offenses, uh, assaults, homicides, human trafficking. All right, crimes against property is just that, crimes against property. Which means uh, car break-ins, uh, auto thefts, burglary, embezzlement, extortions, uh, things of that, those natures. Um, crimes against society. So the crimes against society is drug violations, uh, animal cruelty cases, uh, pornography and prostitution. So I know everybody like to use the cliche, crime is really down, right? But in Ward Three, and let me just say this, everybody think that the Gobby Road Corridor, Old National is like the worst side of town there is, that's not true. Crime is everywhere. But on the Gobby Road Corridor, Ward Three, crime is down in each one of those three uh, categories significantly, right? So, so, so crime against property is down twenty-two point nine percent. That's twenty-two point nine percent, right? So those are crimes again against uh, uh, such crimes as auto theft, uh, theft from vehicles, uh, stolen property, fraud, extortion, things like that, right? So crimes against society is down thirteen point one percent. Right? Those are drug cases, uh, gambling, pornography, prostitution, things like that. And then the crimes that are against persons, they're down thirteen point three percent. Which is sexual offenses, assaults and homicides, right? So I know that we're in the heart of the Old National Parkway Corridor, right? So a lot of times when we have these crimes, those are the uh, locations that allow those crimes occur. Those crimes occur mainly because uh, the city, we're trying to do all we can now. Because we do have a ordinance against um, uh, uh, extended stays, right? So we've gotten with code enforcement, the Police Department and the Health Department, we've gone out to do actual sweeps of the hotels to make sure those owners aren't allowing people, citizens from wherever they come from, to stay in those hotels as an extended stay because we have an ordinance against it. So a lot of times, we have uh, visitors that come into the city. They're not extended state visitors, they come into the city to do business with the city, right? And there are victims of those crimes. So those aren't residents of the city that these crimes are happening to on the corridor. However, karma, we are doing all that we can to make sure that those citizens of the city and those visitors of the city are always uh, uh, safe, right? So uh, let's talk about some safety tips, right? So we talk about those crimes that really pertain to us and our personal property, right? So I believe in the old cliche, if you see something, say something, right? Don't turn a blind eye because oftentimes what you may see could help the Police Department solve a crime, right? So if we see something, we say something, that sort of kind of brings, bridges the gap between the citizens and the Police Department. And right now, that's what we want to do with Twenty First Century Police and that's what we really want to do, right? So I said that to say, uh, when we go shopping, not just in our city, but anywhere, when we go shopping, don't leave things of value in plain sight. You know, um, laptops, computers, cell phones, don't leave things like that in plain sight. Because a lot of these guys, they walk past cars and shopping centers and apartments and hotels. And they look to see, this crime is a, is, is something of opportunity. They look to see what they can get real quick, fast in a hurry and get on, you know? And busting a window on a car, that costs a lot of money. You know, I don't know if you've ever been a victim of a crime, but that's probably about three or four hundred dollars for, for a cellphone or, or a laptop or something, right? We, we don't want to leave those things in plain view. So uh, at your homes, I know uh, Mr. Hicks talking about cameras, right? So I'm a, I'm an advocate for cameras. I love cameras, right? Because to me, cameras assist the Police Department, help solve crimes, right? I don't advocate a certain brand of camera because I can't. But I say get some type of security camera at your house, whether it's brand A or brand B. Get something that if something wasn't happening at your neighbor's house, something happens at your house, it's recorded, it's videoed, right? If you have video footage of it, we come out, those things, they help us solve crimes. Not just the crime that happened at your house, we can actually tie those to other cities, right? Uh, we got College Park, East Point, Haightville, South Fulton, uh, Fabrin, Fayetteville. We have other cities that these knuckleheads are committing crimes, not just in College Park, but they're going from city to city committing crimes. So videos, those things help us as police officers solve crimes, right? All right, um, real quick, I want to talk about some of the activities that we have coming up real soon. Uh, we have uh, back on the for the city, it's saying, we have flyers for National Night Out. National Night Out is going to be August the fifth, uh, twenty twenty If you haven't been to a National Night Out in the city of College Park, you're missing a big treat, right? I mean, College Park is for the entire, everybody, right? It's a free event, it's a free event. Uh, if you don't know what it is, it's an event to bridge the gap between the Police Department and the citizens. And that's when we all let our hairs down, our hair down and we become real, real close together, right? We have fun stuff to do. The Fire Department is there from not just College Park, but they're from other cities. The Police Department is there from other cities. We have vendors that are displaying their businesses, um, for you guys to come out to patronize. There are all kind of people there. Uh, you have alarm company people uh, from different companies. So it's a great opportunity to come out. We have live, we have a live entertainment, we have a band. So we have uh, a whole lot of stuff that you can come out free of charge from six o'clock until eight thirty or nine o'clock on August fifth. Uh, the next event is Kids Fest, right? Uh, it's going to be at the GICC Convention Center, uh, July twenty-sixth. This is an event where the city of College Park is actually partnering with Fulton County Schools. This is an event that you bring your kids out, you get uh, school supplies, you get backpacks, uh, school supplies, you get books. So it's another free event, F R E E, free event. We all love free, right? So come out to these two events and um, support everybody, you know, that's hosting these events and have a good time. Um, some things that I've noticed on the Ward Three Corridor, just within the last month or so, right? So I know uh, Councilwoman Arnold has been talking about all the improvements that are coming on this side. Uh, one of the great things that I've noticed, not we, that uh, DOT is doing on Old National Corridor, they're putting up crosswalks, pedestrian crosswalks, right? So if you don't know what it is, it's an actual crosswalk, uh, I believe it's down by Kilroy's Liquor Store. And there's going to be another one down by, in the South Fulton area. But they're coming to the city of College Park because we have a lot of fatalities on the Old National Corridor, right? Um, that means that when you come to the intersection, you push a little button and the traffic stops in both directions on Old National Highway, right? And you walk across the street. To me, that's a big plus. Because that keeps the Police Department from coming out working fatally. That keeps the loved ones that you guys love so much safe and out of harm's way, right? So I, I saw that the other day. And also they're putting a median down Old National Highway, right? The median is to keep drivers from driving in the center lane, which is a turn lane, at forty-five, fifty miles an hour. Because the center turn lane, we all know, is for turning, right? So that's another great improvement that they're, that they're doing on this side of College Park. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Um, the last thing that I want to talk about, uh, the major briefly talked about it earlier. We're dressed like this because on Wednesday and Thursdays, um, he came up with a brilliant idea of, he has a series called Pedal and Talk. What that is, is when we actually get out into the community, and I believe James has a small clip from today. And we actually get out into the community and we get on bicycles, right? And we engage in the community. So this is what we did today. This is a small clip of what we did today. Um, with the Pedal and Talk series. So, so the actual clip is on YouTube, the actual clip is on YouTube, right? But what it, what it really summarizes is that we actually get out our patrol cars, right? We get out our patrol cars and we get on bikes and we engage in the community, right? Uh, that's Major and myself, we're riding down Old National, I mean, uh, Old National Park. To all the hotels. That's what we did today, rode through all the hotels and the, and the response that we get is like phenomenal, right? They're like, wow, wait a minute, you guys on bikes? And they walk up to us and they have conversation. So that's what we're doing, that's part of Twenty First Century Police, right? So what we want to do is get out of the cars and be personable with all of the folks that are in the community, right? And we want to make sure that they know that we're not all bad. However, karma, if we have to take you to jail, we're going to do what we're supposed to do. Don't get it twisted, right? Don't get that twisted because we're on bicycles, right? So we still got on full gear on a bicycle, we still police officers. But we want to just make an impact on the community. So what we do, we do it every, at least once a week, right? We don't just ride in one ward. We literally ride the bicycles all day long, right? So we've been riding early this morning up until about three o'clock this afternoon. But um, so uh, let me make sure I got Okay, you can go ahead and play a sound if you want to, James. Okay, he's got sound too. So the series is called Pedal and Talk.
This is that, another episode of Pedal and Talk. And today, we've actually tried to territory of Gobby Road, Ward Three. We've been to Ward One, Ward Four, and now we're about to fence it out with Ward Two. But we're doing great out here and we are coming to a neighborhood near you.
All right, so um, that's what we have for the Police Department. Um, also, I just want to, I just want to say, yes sir, I just want to say that um, I think that the Police Department, we're doing a good job, but we need all of you guys, right? Because we can't do anything without you guys. So again, I emphasize the phrase, if you see something, say something, right? Uh, the apartment manager, uh, management team from twenty-three oh one is here. Uh, they know that we are out in the community at least once, twice a week. Come over, check the apartments, we do that. I do that all day long, all week on Gobby Road. That's part of what we're supposed to do. Get out of cars, get on our feet, get on the bikes, and we have conversation. We want to know what's going on. Because if you guys don't tell us, we, we're really not any use to you guys, right? So we need, we need the whole team. Any questions from anybody before Major comes up? Any questions? Go ahead, Major. Yes ma'am. Got a question?
Listen, I think that um, uh, let's give Officer Gibbons a hand. It's all about, it's all about team, okay? I've been fighting crime up and down Gobby Road Corridor, Old National for eighteen years now. All right, I work homicide, everything, I can tell you about every crack, every presence around this area. But the thing is, I, I'm embracing technology now. So Hicks normally has some deep conversations. I love the leadership with, with heading now. And we're going to keep pushing. When you see something, call us. I'm a crime fighter. I get out of my bed, I'll come out there, you know?
I am a crime fighter. I'll come out there, no matter what time it is. Uh, I guess I'm just real like that because after years, after you answer that on-call phone for so long, the first time it rang at three o'clock in the morning, like, yes, I'm going to help you. So ask around, they know we'll show up. And I think we forget, just with the breaks itself and we haven't had a council meeting uh, yet. But how many uh, were here for Juneteenth Parade? How about you give yourselves a hand? Because I'm telling you, that was history being made, you know? And it's funny because I had like three days to start getting ready for that parade after we uh, worked together as a team. But a lot of people said it couldn't happen on Gobby Road. They said, no, it's dangerous over there. We got together, public safety worked together to make it happen and was a great success. I'm going to tell you, no, zero incidences. And make national news. So give yourselves a hand. We made it happen. So again, thank you all. You need anything, please see us for your lady.
Thank you.
We have an amazing team, right? I want you all to give them a hand, another hand. My purpose for asking department heads to come and speak is so that you all can understand all of the work that's being done behind the scenes. None of us can do any of this alone. You, you elect us to represent you. We work for you. But it's the people who are hired in the city under the leadership of the city manager that makes our dreams come to life. And I am so proud of everything that they have done, especially in support of helping us to continue to create history. Gobby Road was once, it was the pinnacle of this city. You had people who worked for Airtran, Eastern, Delta that lived in this area. They owned homes. Everyone wanted to be here. And as long as we continue to work together, next year, this time, this corridor is not going to look like it has been over the past five years. It's going to be a change. We're going to restore Gobby Road to the glory that it once had. And I need your support to continue to push that vision. I thank you all for the support that you have given us to, to bring something like the parade that had never occurred in history on Gobby Road. And so we want to continue to have that. It's to my understanding, we had more people at that parade than we've had at any parade in the city of College Park. So what does that say? It says that we were meeting the needs for the community. The people want it here. And so we should continue to have it here on Gobby Road, at least that one. So you know, I, I want to thank you all because again, this engagement helps us. It helps the staff to know what it is that we should be doing to support the community. These next couple of slides are the representatives, the appointees that I've made to each one of the boards. And I don't think we have anyone here this evening to share any updates about their experiences on, on their boards. But I want you to see who the individuals are. Because these are your neighbors. You know, they are on these boards also representing you. Um, they are bringing uh, feedback to me uh, to help us guide and move the city forward when it comes to things like keep College Park beautiful. That's helping us to keep our streets um, clean. And also to help us to visualize beautification projects for the city. For things like the facade grants that we just uh, funded in the last couple of months. And so we want to, to see our businesses, especially here on the Gobby Road Corridor, Gobby Old National. And so we've partnered with uh, the Old National Merchants Association to be able to provide funding for the businesses in this corridor to help them keep their businesses beautiful as well. Then we have BZA, our representative there. Uh, if you have a home, um, if you're looking for a different project, a business, and, and you need to have any type of variance, then this is the representative for Ward Three that helps with those uh, zoning appeals. We have um, also our uh, Business and Industrial Development Authority representative. Next slide, please. Uh, the College Park Main Street Association, uh, I just mentioned a few minutes ago about how we funded the Old National Merchants Association. This association, this nonprofit receives funding from the city as well. And so it helps businesses on the Main Street and Virginia Avenue corridors where they talk about promoting their businesses. You may have heard of the Wine Stroll, there's a Business Directory, all of that. And so this is our representative for that. Our Planning Board Representative. Of course, if you're planning anything within the city, this is who you will reach out to. And then we have our new DMO. And I think everybody has heard about the Destination Marketing Association. Everyone's heard about FIFA. That organization is helping to promote activities. They also help to promote activities throughout the city. So a lot of the banners and the flyers. And if you came to the Juneteenth Parade, you may have seen flags hanging up on the post, the light posts up and down the street and also on Main Street. Those are from the DMO. And so we want to thank them for their partnership. Next slide. The Alcohol Review License Review Board. You may, if you've been keeping up with our council meetings, we implemented a new board to review all of the alcohol licenses for the businesses throughout the city. And then last but not least, the man in the back who keeps me straight, Shawn Francis. Shawn has... Yes, Shawn actually holds down the fort while I'm working every day. And he is extremely instrumental. He has been that foundation and rock for the office. And so I appreciate him. I wanted to also add one additional thing that Major Denar mentioned. I'm sorry, it wasn't, it was Officer Gibbons that mentioned the crosswalks. So coming soon on Gabby Road, because we understood that it was a safety issue that was even happening here on Gabby Road. We are working with Metro Corp, who has, I'm sorry, Metro Traffic Study, who did a study here on Gabby Road. And so we have three crosswalks that are gonna be implemented here on Gabby Road. They are the crosswalks that are very similar to, they're identical to the ones that are on Virginia Avenue, where you walk up, you push the button, it stops traffic on both sides to allow you to cross safely on Gabby Road. And those should be coming this summer. So, all right. So I think we've come to a point where we're gonna start, we're gonna answer some questions. I think Shawn has some questions for me. And while he's bringing those up, I want to also give a moment before I start asking, answering questions. I want to, I know he said that he wasn't going to say anything and he's not on the agenda. But I do want to bring him up because he keeps us all safe. And in some cases, one of my employees says, "safe and out of jail." And that is our city attorney, Mr. Winston Denmark.
Good evening, everyone. I certainly will not be long in the interest of time. But I am Winston Denmark, I'm the city attorney. I'm not just a city attorney for College Park. My law firm, Denmark Ashby, we represent, last count, twelve different cities, from Shambly to Camilla, one end of the state to another. And so we are fortunate to represent the City of College Park. My office is actually in College Park in Ward Three. And so this is my councilwoman. And so our office is right off of Loop Road. My goal is to provide sage advice to the mayor and city council to give them the information tools to make good public policy decisions. A good city attorney is like a good referee. You never notice them. When the referee comes and you notice the referee and you know his name, it's a bad referee. Because nobody came, nobody paid to see you, sir. And so they came to see the players. And so you guys have elected the players, the mayor and the city council. They are the show and my job is to facilitate what they do. I have no independent agenda. Nobody elected me to anything. So you have to be selfless as a city attorney. Recognize that it's not about you and you need to find answers to help them do what they need to do. A bad city attorney, when they ask a question, says, "Well, Mr. Attorney, can I do this, this and that, the other?" And say, "Well, no, you can't, period." That's a bad attorney, that's a period lawyer. A good lawyer is a comma lawyer. Well, no, you can't do it that way, comma, but you can do it this way. If we can try this route to accomplish the same end. They don't pay me to tell them no. They pay me to help them find a way to accomplish the public policy initiative that they have that's gonna benefit their constituency. So it's a tough job some days because as elected officials, they don't always agree. And so, and that's American democracy, God bless America. They were elected, they have different ideas and they have different agendas. And sometimes I get caught in the middle of that. And that's okay, that's okay. I mean, I signed up for this, so ain't nobody gonna feel sorry for me. But, so, so I have two elected officials wanting to go in different directions and they both said, "Ain't that right, Mr. Attorney?" And sometimes in a public meeting. So what a good lawyer does is he anticipates that that's going to be the case. I understand who my councilpeople are, that's why I come out to events like this. I need to hear, I need to see, I need to understand. And so if I know these two trains are gonna collide, I pull the light train aside and say, "Hey, look, you don't want that smoke." You fixing to take an L on this one, so go another direction." And so I want to tell them that in private. And so we don't have to deliver that unhappy news in a public forum. So my goal is to be able to anticipate and to understand the lay of the land, to listen to everything that they say. You guys seem at the city council meetings, I don't say that, I do all my work outside that meeting. You know, because if I'm sweating and working hard in the city council meeting, I haven't done my job. I need to know the agenda back and forth. I need to know what every single council person wants. I need to have called them, talked to them, and I need to have figured everything out. And so by the time I get to the city council meeting, that's easy time. That's easy time. So College Park is in good shape right now. We don't have any major legal issues, little more. I represent some other cities and they have colossal litigation that threatens the heart and soul of their city. We don't have that in College Park. So right now, we're in a comfortable space, knock on wood. And we work hard. I have a team of ten lawyers and all we do is local government work. We don't do divorces, we don't do automobile cases, we don't do nothing. All except the business of cities in school system. So we, in addition to representing cities, I represent the Clayton County School District, Clayton County Water Authority, represent a number of authorities around, like the Hable Development Authority, South Fulton Development Authority, Jonesboro Downtown Development Authority. So all I do is the work of local government. So we are a specialized firm. So if you got, if your little cousin locked up, don't call me. I don't do that. I do, but if you're on the city council, you represent city X, I'm your dude. So that's all I'm gonna say, y'all. But it is my honor to represent the City of College Park. And I've been with my law firm since January twenty of two thousand and four. And so it's over twenty years I've been representing the City of College Park. And it has been my life's work. Because when I hang it all up, and God willing, it'll be soon, and I look back on my career, the proudest moments and my greatest accomplishments would be the things that I accomplished for the City of College Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So first question about my long-term vision of Gabby Road. I think I've shared that vision before, and I think I shared it a few minutes ago, about Gabby Road. My long-term vision is for Gabby Road to be restored to the glory it once had. Now, it may not be the same, right? Because years ago, in the eighties, when Gabby Road had all of the homes and the nice apartments and people living and working in this area. We're not gonna do the clubs. We're not gonna do the clubs. But, you know, the development is going to be different. You know, there is a master plan that's outside of my vision that came, that has come to this area and is going to start in this area under Airtropolis. And so we're going to do what we can and we are going to have the influence that we can with the developers that come in this area to match up with that plan that was already in place. Ultimately, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, the goal is for a year from now, when you come down Gabby Road, it won't be the same. We're looking to bring a new city park, a seven-acre park, right here on Gabby Road with a facility that's going to offer additional recreational space, classrooms, community space. So that's a part of that long-term vision, along with also new housing. Not just affordable housing, but opportunities for people to be able to purchase their own homes. Now, what do those products look like? I don't know. They may come in the form of townhomes, they may come in the form of cottages. But we're, we have our ear open and we're talking with developers that are interested in coming. And so that would be my personal long-term goal. But it's not about me. It's about what the constituents want. And based on the survey and the feedback that we've heard thus far, people are looking for not only affordability, but also ownership. And so that may come, again, townhomes, it may come in condos, cottages. And so we'll just have to keep those conversations going to see who we can attract to the city. The foundation is key, though. As the, as the police officers mentioned earlier, that having a safety plan in place, which is what we worked with the police chief last year. She put together an extensive safety plan and drove all of city council and the mayor throughout the entire city. But specifically, I rode with her throughout the ward here. And she talked about those hotspots that she needed to take care of. And they've done a phenomenal job. When you hear that crime has gone down by the percentages that were mentioned earlier, that comes in having a comprehensive plan, knowing that we need to set the foundation to attract developers to this area. So next year, this time, we'll be looking at something different. A couple of the other items on the cards are not necessarily questions, but about issues and concerns. And so I recognize the concerns that are happening over Princeton Avenue and Princeton Village. I live there. So as a matter of fact, last week, we actually had an incident where we had one of our neighbors that had a medical emergency. And the vehicles, the emergency vehicles, were having a challenge getting through. I know that the HOA president in Princeton Village, and we'll be looking at the senior community there as well to come together. Hopefully, we can all sit down and come up with a comprehensive plan. Those streets are extremely narrow. And having cars on the streets just makes it that more complicated when we need to get emergency services to people in need. The sound barrier is something that we have, that we have at least brought up to our DOT representative. But that is also at a higher level than just the state because it has to go up to the federal, right? And so I'll be taking that when we move into our federal, speaking to our federal delegation. So I have this one, it has been on the list. And so we have not forgotten about it. There are other comments in reference to services and support for the community here. And we will get back to you on that. Okay. Let me see it. Is that bad bugs and rotten? Oh, and rodents. Is this in a particular community? Okay. I got you. I know, I know where you're talking about. I know, I know exactly where it is, right? Okay.
The water infrastructure, and I get that. But the water comes underneath in my yard.
Gotcha.
Which causes it to rain. I guess you're tearing down the apartments with the rodents. But then you give them...
They run into the neighborhood.
Then you give them a mess. So now, I guess they get overgrown, over the... I want to say the water goes to the river. That's what I'm gonna say, I could be wrong. So I'm just trying to see. Yeah, I mean, I've called, I've talked to the people that come out. I mean, the grass is not the problem. It's the round sewer thing that runs up under that road. I don't know what you would call it. But it brings it over that sits in my yard.
The drain.
Yeah.
So maybe that's something that we can, would you, do you want to address that? Okay, I think that that's something that we can kind of take offline and the city manager can help to address that particular item. Again, the other ones are not necessarily questions, there are comments. And I am taking these comments and I will definitely respond. If this is your card, I need your contact information so that I can respond to you properly. With that being said, those are all the questions that I have. I guess we will move to the next phase is somebody brought dinner. And I want to thank Mr. Andre Joseph for making sure that we have dinner this evening. All right. Thank you.